...order at 7:00 PM and Councilmember Bailey will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And after that, Councilmember Larson will offer an invocation.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful for the opportunity to serve the city of Riverton. Father, please watch over and bless us that we might say and do those things which would be most pleasing unto Thee and to our citizens of Riverton, that we might serve them faithfully. Father, we're thankful for the weather, thankful for building that we are meeting in and all that Thou has blessed us with. And we say this humbly, "Name Thy Son, Jesus Christ." Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Lance Scotty.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Baker.
I am present and declare that we have a quorum. The chairman entertained a motion for the approval of the agenda with the addition of an executive session after item number eight.
So moved.
Seconded.
It is seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I guess, Idea Inc., presentation, economic development. City administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor, council, in brief, one of the items that we have talked about a great deal is economic development, the development of a master plan. In previous council meetings, we had talked about the need to meet with Idea Inc. as our economic development arm and discuss some of the goals and provide some input, both to them and some conversation. As we are looking at a master plan in the future, one of the items that is contained within the master plan deals with economic development. In the meantime, the development and fine tuning of those goals is appropriate. Looking at the goals that you adopted at the last meeting, they line up very well with the Idea Inc. goals in terms of air service and fiber connectivity. But in an effort to allow some input from council to Idea Inc. in a conversation, we put this meeting together so Idea Inc. could present to you the items that they've been, that they have worked on, their successes, and then hopefully we'd have a conversation about how council sees the economic development needs of our community and how we can work together on those. In brief, that is all I have for a report and I would turn it over to, turn it back over to you and to Idea Inc. for their presentation, sir.
Good. Kevin?
Honored members of council, thank you. So what we did is we put together a rough outline of what we wanted to cover today. Hopefully, it's going to be more of an interaction, dialogue between each of the organizations here. But I'm Kevin Kerschisnik, Executive Director of Idea Inc. And with us today, we have Alan Moore, who's the president, Lee Herrmann, who's Secretary Tre- or Secretary Treasurer, Lyndon Califf, board member, George Piplica, board member, John Gunnison, board member, Tam Moore, basically a board member. Yeah, she's basically on the board, helps us out. She's at all the board meetings. So, big help. And especially on the Depot Foundation, we start talking about that. So what we want to do is just give you a little bit of a recap of what we've been doing. I think you guys have this presentation in your, in your packet. Okay. And so we'll go over that a little bit here. And so basically, it's a collaborative effort. I know we talked about this before. I think we gave the presentation a couple of months back. And really, for economic development to be successful, it's going to require all of us in this room plus majority of the community to make that successful. And this is Idea Inc., a little bit about the organization, the history and so forth. What I'd like to do here is turn it over to Mr. Moore and he can give us, give you a little bit of update of where we're at as an organization, where we've been, the accomplishments to date, and then I'll come back in and talk to you a little bit about the economic development building blocks. We can have some interchange from there.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, or good evening, depending upon which part of the world you're in. My name's Alan Moore. I'm President of Idea Inc. We have been asked occasionally what, what we think that we can do or what we should do. And we think of ourselves as facilitators. And an example of that would be if some of you were old enough to remember when Riverton had a railroad running through it, you would see rail cars on the line without an engine and you would see a single person with a great long iron rod, great long one with a handle on the end and a little hook down at the bottom and a fulcrum. And that man could walk up behind one of those rail cars, jam that lever in underneath it, pull down and move that car by himself unless somebody had put a nickel on the track. And if you put a nickel on the track, because I like to collect flat nickels, I did this, if you put a nickel on the track right up against the wheel, that man could not move it. But if you remove the nickel, he can. So that's what we think of ourselves as, as a group that can remove the nickel and the gravel from the track so that other people can move things easily. So with that philosophy, over the years, we have been successful with Wyoming Business Council grants and we have some real estate holdings that we have. And what I'm going to do is just tell you about the last 12 months or so of things that we have done. The Alco Building, we have re-roofed it. We have created what's called a vanilla shell, which is a space that's lease ready for some outside business to come into and, and enter into negotiations for. We negotiated with a, a sporting goods company for a period of time over our vanilla shell. And the reason we negotiated with them was because it was a kind of business that wouldn't displace anybody else and would make things available that otherwise weren't in our community. Well, the lease negotiations were not successful because they wanted us to take all the risk, put up all the money, and they could leave anytime they wanted. And we wouldn't allow that. One of the accomplishments of this year was the Brunton Building used to be leased by a company called Fiskers, who then subleased it to the current Brunton. We allowed Fiskers to buy out that lease and leave their financial guarantees behind. And with that accomplished, we redid the lease between Idea and Brunton, which reduced Brunton's rent by 50%, which allowed them to stay and preserve the 25 or so jobs they had then. They now have 29. And that deduct, redoing that lease also allowed Brunton to negotiate with Pitch Engine to go into the Brunton Building and take up residence there. Along the way, we settled an obligation that we owed to Central Wyoming College Foundation for $50,000 bucks. So we gave them $50,000 bucks. In the area of airline development, we supply the money that pays for Kevin Kerschnichnik, who spends a great deal of time with the all-volunteer FAST committee, which is Fremont County Air Service Team. And we provide $4,000 a month in cash for the FAST team for some of the things that they are responsible for paying for. We also, every month, have a meeting for the Riverton Economic and Community Development Association that we organize, arrange and foot the bill for. And some of the things that Kevin has done is he has crafted a grant application, the Riverton Strategic Plan, which will be used to pay, if successful, will be used to pay for public meetings and information gathering. And Idea Inc. has pledged to pay $10,000 of that match fund. The Idea Inc. Board of Directors is also responsible for something called the Depot Foundation. The Depot Foundation is a 501(c)(3) tax code described organization that has a tax exempt ruling from the IRS that allows us to act as an agent for volunteers who have a good idea and they want to become engaged now and carry their idea to fruition. In the normal course of affairs, these groups would have to stop, fill out an IRS application, wait six months, pay $700 bucks or $800 or $1,100, depending upon the kind of organization, to get an IRS tax exemption. One of the groups that we have worked with is the Veterans Hall. They wrote a 501(c)(3) application. We reviewed it and Veterans Hall has now graduated. They stand on their own. They are an IRS tax exempt organization. And the funds that we had been holding for them, we remitted to them. Some of the other projects that the Depot Foundation is involved in is the River Walk. We have recently engaged the Tree Board because the Tree Board knows how to plant trees and we don't. And they're much better at it. So we're going to see if we can't put together a long-term tree planting program that every year does another section of the River Walk and turn that into something that is more acceptable. The River Walk has also worked with the Job Corps, Lions Club, Rotary, Kiwanos and other civic organizations. We are going to try to organize these volunteer groups to assist the Tree Board with their project as they go along. We've also assisted the, the CWSA, which are the skateboard park people. We have about spent all the money that they've raised. We've assisted the Splash Pad Group. We have assisted the Air Service Task Force. We are investigating or have investigated a community kitchen. We have had some brief conversations with some farmers market people to see if it would be possible or more efficient to have a farmers market consolidation. We have offered to perhaps help pay for that organization with the idea being that we would like to create a market where suppliers know that they can sell and buyers know that they can buy and it's reliable and will be there. That might allow some of our smaller craftsmen to sell things during off, during the summertime when tourists are around. Those are the things that we have worked on in this last year. It's not the list of things that we have underway because we have others that, that for privacy reasons, we won't discuss in public right now. So Kevin, do you have any other comments or points? Or any board member want to clean up something that I have made a mess of? Any questions? Time's up.
Time's up. Okay. Thank you, Alan, for your dedication to the city of Riverton.
Well, you know, if you live here, you've got to take care of it, so.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll just buzz through the balance of this presentation here. Like I said, it's a collaborative effort. Here's all the partners, just some of the partners, I should say, that we partner with to, to make economic development happen in the city. And this one, I think you guys have seen before, these are the economic development building blocks. And again, the base there is the, the support of the elected officials, yourselves in the community, to help put laws and so forth into place to support economic development for our community. The three red blocks there, that's the, the basis that we work on, which is getting quality of life, infrastructure and workforce in place so we can help the existing businesses and then recruit. So bulk of our time is, is really with the red blocks and the blue blocks, which are business retention expansion and then also with entrepreneurial development. And I think one key point there is if you look at Brunton, when they were going out of business, they were looking at moving out of this area. The lease agreement that Alan, the team, had crafted really allowed them and basically mandated that they stayed here from an economic standpoint. While a lot of the executives left, there were people in the administrative side, the professional side, that decided to stay here. And there's been five additional companies that have been formed because of those individuals staying in our community. And that's where we say, the business retention expansion, that's where we're going to see most of our growth. You know, the, the probability of recruiting an Amazon to our community is going to be relatively low. Recruiting businesses, we're still doing that, but not a lot of our time is, is spent there and the probability of being successful, successful there is relatively low as well. So we really focus on, on the blue blocks. And these are, I think they're in your packets, but you can see, these are a couple of the things that we've done that Alan mentioned, the skate park, the Depot Foundation for the River Walk, that has to do with the quality of life, the workforce. And we have several partnerships with CWC, Wind River Job Corps, Workforce Development, et cetera. And then the infrastructure, like you guys have identified in your strategic plan for economic development, is broadband and air service being critical. And we, we agree 100%. We've done a fair amount with the air service, still got a ways to go, but thanks to Mr. Butterfield's help and a bunch of people in this room, you know, we've been able to move that forward for the benefit of the community. And we'll continue. We're starting down the broadband path and now with the legislation that passed with Endow, hopefully, we're going to be able to utilize some of the state funds through the Endow program and through the Business Council. And we'll talk more about that a little bit later. Then here are the existing businesses and you probably recognize those, but the top left is Smart Start, the daycare. And then the top right is the railcar facility out in Shoshone. Bells and Legacy are both part of the Idea Building and then Brunton, as we mentioned before. And those are all projects that we've started, developed through the BRC grants, the Business Ready Community Grants, utilize those. And then we have a cash flow from the lease of those spaces to those tenants that continue to provide funds so we can do economic development for the city. What we like to say is we, we think this is the best model in the state. Other people have just taken the funds from the BRC and say pocketed it, but enriched maybe one or two individuals. We continue to cycle that. So as we bring those monies in, we say, all right, what else can we do with that? So we've taken the proceeds from these operations and helped air service the last two years in tune of, what, about $50,000 per annum and continuing to do that.
Holly?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Okay. Have you got a question?
Nope, not yet.
Okay. All right.
Okay. And then the entrepreneurial programs. So of course, we have stuff through the Wyoming Business Resource Network that we utilize and also the Bootstrap Collaborative, which is a great program between Pitch Engine and the college. And Lynn, would you like to add anything on that? Okay. If you guys have any questions on that, we can, can answer those. And then the, the recruiting side, you know, some of the new businesses that came to town, some of those arguably could be expansions, but Bells was a new retailer that we brought to town. The Wind River Job Corps was done on the efforts of a lot of people in town, but we just put it up here for, for picture's sake, I guess.
We distributed money.
We did. We did. Yeah, an effort, right? Yeah, we did that. So, so we, this is kind of where I'd like to open up the dialogue, you know, and, and see what, what you guys are thinking. We, we kind of listed some of these. What are the challenges and goals that we have in, in the community? And we've seen the goals from the city that Tony shared and we agree with those on the economic development side. But, you know, what are our big challenges? We have diversification, right? I mean, the taxes are paid mainly through the energy sector. We're energy sector dependent. So that's really a, I don't want to call it an issue, but it's something that needs to be addressed or contended with. If you're going to diversify, is it through the energy sector itself? Do you diversify with the other sectors and, and retain the energy? The other thing we see when we go to recruit businesses is they ask for interstate connectivity, want to be on an interstate. So whether it be that went up to Sheridan, one of the reasons they went there instead of Lander was that they were on an interstate. You know, we can't do anything about that. But the next two, which we think are very critical, we can. And that's broadband connectivity, to have that as if you're in a big city. And if we can do that here in Riverton, you can, you can have any job you want working here, just like you would in a large city. And then air service, the ability to get in and out, get your clients, your customers, your employees and your family in and out is, is critical as well. And I guess that's kind of where we got a question, if we want to discuss that at this point, Tony, or how you'd like to handle that. But, you know, what do you, what do you guys see as other challenges maybe that we haven't identified here that we need to start addressing?
Lynn?
So I don't know if this is where it's at, but as I was looking through this, I've, I've had several people from the community approach me about their concerns with Sage West. It seems like Sage West has bought the Lander and Riverton area and now that we are not competing, because before when it was owned by two different businesses, it seemed like they were always competing, trying to one-up each other. And we had plenty of stuff here and plenty of stuff in Lander. Well, it seems like now, every time you hear something, there's somebody else that's getting pulled to work over in Lander or we're losing OB and we're losing this and there's not a surgeon that's on staff over here and stuff like that. So I, as I was going through, I was reading this, I was like, oh, cool, we'll hear from this guy and then it'll kind of lead into this, but I don't know what happened with him. Anyways, that's not important. But I was looking through your blocks and I think this kind of goes right into our quality of life because, I mean, we can have great schools, great airport and everything this, but if you got to travel 30 miles in the dead of January, you know, with a blizzard, try to get to a hospital, that, that, that's not going to be very appealing to somebody. Could I know, especially somebody who has children with medical issues, I like the convenience of having a hospital that's only five minutes away or something like that. So I don't know if this is the right place, if you can do something with that, but I've had five or six people approach me within the last two weeks about their concerns about Sage West and their issues, so.
Mm-hmm. I guess a couple of comments. One is that Alan Doherty, the CEO, came to RECDA, it was a month before last, and those questions were, were asked of him. And basically, his response was they were going to take what's best in both facilities and try to expand that. So if they do something better in Riverton, they would keep that here. If something better is in Lander, they would keep that there. Now, I think things might have changed a little bit since that meeting two months ago. We've gone out and talked to them about broadband connectivity, which was, the two issues he had at the end of the RECDA meeting were broadband connectivity and workforce. So we've had subsequent meetings with them to address the broadband. So we're putting them into a grant application that we're going to have that will give them connectivity, at least from their facility in Riverton to the unified network. Okay? They still want a dedicated line between Riverton and Lander and that still has to be addressed for MRI data and so forth to go back and forth. And then we talked to them about training grants for their employees and pre-hire grants, which we're working on to get that in place for their employees as well. So those are some of the things we've done. I don't know. Alan, would you like to add?
Alan Moore, President of Idea Inc., you could also address this from the viewpoint of leakage. We have many, many, many people in this community who get their medical care way farther than 30 miles away. Some cases, 300 miles, some cases, 200 miles, but they aren't afraid to travel. Problem with that is every time you take a dollar out of the community, it's a dollar that's taken out of the community and opportunities that aren't allowed to become real. So this, this sort of, of whispering campaign or dissatisfaction helps breed that export of our medical dollars. And when that happens, there is a critical mass that starts to be missing. And when that critical mass does not exist, there is no reason for a business that's operated for a profit, which these hospitals are, to invest money in people, personnel or anything else. So if you want to kill the medical establishment, don't support them, abandon them and you'll do a damn fine job. So if you want it to be here, you have to support it. And that goes for all of our businesses. I think it would be a reasonable idea for everybody who listens or everybody who's here or everybody that you talk to to ask yourself, when was the last time I was in that shop on Main Street? I don't believe I've ever been in it. I don't even know what they have to sell. I don't know what they have that's unique. And I've deprived them of the opportunity to inform me and perhaps sell me something that I couldn't get anywhere else. So I think it would be a pretty good little plan, maybe on a very small scale, for every one of us to just say, you know, I'm going to visit every shop on Main Street in the coming year and I'm going to look around and see what they've got. So.
Come on?
You spam on that broadband and why the hospital needs X-rays. Something.
Well, there's things on the back, actually. It can be rude. You want to elaborate on that, Dan?
You got it. Okay. Yeah, it's perfect.
I mean, just in the meetings that we sat with the hospital, the point that was crossed with me that made so much sense is that we, we're a very small community, but they can have, to get the quality of staff that they need or the quality of the individuals that they need, if they had the better broadband service, they could get those X-rays or those examinations and that doctor could be in Lander but giving advice in Riverton. Or that doctor could be in Riverton giving advice in Lander. They can spend hours. They sometimes have to hand deliver because the broadband services aren't capable of feeding both hospitals the, the information they need. So when we're out there trying to help the hospital recruit or trying to bring physicians, those are issues to those doctors too. On, do I have enough business? If, what are you going to give me if I come to Riverton? Can I service both these markets from one community? Does that kind of make sense? So that's why our broadband test is such a big thing and is so high on that priority, is in a way to help Sage West especially and with their proximity to the college now and, and those services and integrating with the Pitch Engine and trying to work incubator ideas and things like that are all part of that network, if you will, to enhance those opportunities, to help enhance the hospital, to help enhance Pitching and to help enhance incubator. But without our broadband stuff, then that's definitely where we're going to have to go more electronic, if you will, to help our hospital in this case, in this question, to help recruiting better people, be able to make the living they need to make for their skill level, may not need two in one market. One that's mobile for a market. Does that kind of make sense? That's my thoughts.
Mr. Larson?
George, that makes great sense, but most of the older doctors have retired in Riverton and the doctors in Lander are much younger. And the doctors in Lander have the hospital over a board in Lander. The maternity ward in Riverton historically has delivered most of the reservation babies. Not anymore.
Right. I agree that.
Now, now, to say that the distance and, and internet would improve that is not true because birth of a baby has nothing to do with the internet.
No, it won't solve that whole issue.
Won't solve that at all.
And I agree that they're a for-profit, Kyle, but I think there's a point where, like Alan says, that we've, I think Alan has come to the head of this community and really put some ideas into trying to fix the internal issues that aren't ours but are theirs probably. So it's very important, though, if he comes to us and says, I need broadband, I want to be on the list of, okay, we'll help you get broadband. And, and you help me get OB in both towns. Do you see what I mean?
Yeah.
So that we can feed from that point. But whatever that, gentlemen, from my experience, is doing to put a public image to help build, I think they've made some huge strides. I know what they've done from what they've come to my business and said, can you help us do this and can you help us do this and can you help us do this? Well, we're on board with that. Doesn't mean we're selling a house. It means that we're on board with, wow, if that can help an area where, in my case, I'm servicing both counties. Many of you are in your professions. That's what I'm after. And that's where I think so, being positive. And that's where I think, so being positive about our hospital but finding a way to do it is crucial, because I, again, back with Alan, if we're not careful, you might have one in one town and have zero service in the other. If I was my wallet, I'd be careful of that, of how it's paid or expanded, so.
Mike?
Again, I would agree that the broadband's a huge thing, and I think it's not just the hospital and college and the high school. I think it's important for overall business. And again, the more people we can get on it, the cheaper it's going to be for everybody involved. And I think that's a huge thing if you're recruiting, for example, that if you don't have good broadband service, you're going to be out of the running.
You're going to be on a real short list fast of...
Yep, and I would agree that, you know, we'd rather have one good orthopedic guy in Fremont County, even if he's in Lander, compared to having to go somewhere else to get that, or, and I'm just using that as an example. And again, we'd love to have one in Riverton and one in Lander, so you wouldn't have to go that far. But I think there are a basic set of services that are expected...
Yeah.
...that, you know, we have to get them to provide so that people, you know, are going to know that they can get service there. And, you know, we've got doctors that come in here from all over the state doing their little specialties, and even if that's what it takes, that's better than people having to drive and go somewhere else and stay overnight somewhere else or whatever it is. And so I think that, yeah, there's a lot of ways that we can help that.
Yeah.
And then I guess I have a question for you guys, is when you are talking to potential businesses or people coming for the hospital or whatever it is, are there any other little items that maybe we have missed? You know, I think as the city, we want to make sure that we have the regulatory environment and a quality-of-life environment that's pleasing for the person that wants to live someplace like Riverton, Wyoming. Are you guys hearing anything like that?
No, I mean, as far as, I'll take that one. Yeah, as far as the recruiting package, you know, we get a standard form that comes in that has things such as utility, utilities, you know, what are the rates, building availabilities, land availability, things like that. And they all vary, but the ones that we seek almost on every application is broadband connectivity. They show, do you have a college, a facility that you can train your personnel? Check, check. The ones that are a little more detailed may say, do you have a Walmart near your town? You know, things like that, they're just looking for the size predominantly. But I think of the things that we can control, the infrastructure portion, that we're in pretty good shape, you know, as far as the highway, no. As far as rail coming right into town where they can put heavy equipment on there and rail it out, no. But, you know, we have Shoshone, we're close, we talk about the mileage to go to the interstates and so forth. But I think as far as the infrastructure stuff, you know, I think we're in pretty good shape, from what I've seen so far.
Lance?
Kevin, I'm curious if you can give perspective of the broadband status in Riverton? Like, if you were to give it a percentage of, I don't know, maybe differentiate business environment, business area as well as residential? I know business is really where you're focused, but maybe if you combine all of them together, is there, how connected is Riverton in broadband connectivity?
Okay. From a broad brushstroke standpoint?
Yeah.
So you're familiar with the Unified Network in the state?
Based on your presentation, yes.
All right, so I assume that's correct, then. Maybe some mods to it, but anyway. So yes, you know, we have the Unified Network, which comes into Riverton. And so if we were to go outside of Riverton with any type of communications, we're talking 100 gigabyte per channel, 40 channel, four terabyte of capacity. Okay, phenomenal. Probably one of the best states in the nation from that perspective. The issue that we have, then, is going from that trunk line to the branches out to the leaves, if you will. The last mile, you've heard them talk a lot about that. So it's, how do you get the businesses and the houses connected to that trunk? That's really where we have the issue. So if you're a business in town, for example, and you want to go ahead and say, all right, what broadband connectivity can I get? They could run a fiber from the trunk, if you will, to your business, but I've heard quotes in town anywhere from, for a small business, $20,000 up to several hundred thousand dollars to connect businesses, you know, cost prohibitive. So we have to find a way of getting that last mile, and how do we economically do that? The state has basically said they're not going to fund that, but now with the endowment, there are some money set aside, broadband director and/or coordinator, and then they have funds available for grants. Now, what they're talking about is that that may only be for communities that have less than 25 megabyte per second capacity. Okay? If you have that or more, regardless of how much it costs, you may or may not be able to get those grants. Other grants are available. So for businesses in town, they range, you know, 10 to maybe 100 megabyte per second. Your home's probably pretty similar to that, you know, I'm sure you've seen that, you know, if you want 50 megabytes, you can get it, you can pay for it. So what we like to see is, can we do the branches, put the branches in place through the major conduits? One of the ones we're looking at now is to go into the CWC Business Park. So if we can run a conduit there, you know, hook up Sage West, hook up all the technology companies in that business park, that would be a great first step. Then we would have broadband capabilities. When we're out recruiting, we could say, all right, if you want to have one gigabyte per second capacity at your business, sure, we can do that, we have that. If you want a dedicated line, we could do that as well, but you'd have to pay for it. But these are going to be probably private-public partnerships, you know, you're going to be working with the Century Links, the ACTs, the Wind River Wireless, Silver Stars of the world, you know, in our area. So you have to work with them to make this a reality, so.
And you see that as, that is what your plan is? I mean, I guess that's maybe dialing down into the weeds of it, is that broadband connectivity of going from the trunk out to the business front to cut down on the cost that it costs the business to connect? That's the role of Idea Inc. in that area, to facilitate grant funding?
That's correct, to put that infrastructure in place.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah, so for example, there was a grant in Natrona County, I think it was lost, but anyway, in Natrona County, I can speak to that one. So what they did is they got grant money through the Wyoming Business Council, and they ran conduit out to the airport and to the business park by the airport. So they had somebody to tell them what was needed, so they put it out for bid, and Century Link actually won that deal. And so then the conduit then was provided by this grant. The fiber inside of that conduit is provided by the ISP or the service provider, the internet provider. So in this case, it was Century Link that then put their fiber in there, connected these businesses, and then was able to get a revenue stream from that. So that's how that worked there.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
So I guess my question is, what do you see as a role for the city of Riverton in this development of the last mile? Do we get in the internet business?
Some cities have done that.
You know, try to further that, or...
Sure. Well, I mean, if you go to the far extreme, right? If you look at Werland, what they did is ACT came in there and they made them a one-gig community. So that's one gigabyte of capacity to each house and business in town. They did that under their own will. They basically said, I'm going to do this from a business perspective. If you look at the business side, the payback in that was eight-plus years, probably more than that. So we figure in order to do the last mile in Riverton, you're probably looking at 12 to maybe 15 million dollars. And so, I mean, if we were able to write a check today, you know, we would take care of that. We could get that done, we could be a municipal owner of broadband in town. And I don't recommend that, but, you know, that's one thing that could be looked at. Some towns have done that. I think if we can utilize grant monies, so in the case of what we set up a CWC Business Park, we want to put the conduit in place, and then we want to have the internet providers actually run the fiber in there and hook up the businesses and go ahead and run their typical business. So what we would look for would be if we do a grant application, maybe with the Wyoming Business Council, that obviously we'd need the city to sponsor that. You know, that's probably where I see that working for the tack that we're taking going forward. We had talked about doing a county-wide sales tax that could possibly use for infrastructure, too. It's kind of put on the shelf right now, but that's another way, you know, where we'd need resolution from four of the six municipalities, we could move that forward and be some type of tax that then we could use for air service and broadband. That's another way. Right now, we're presently looking at the first venue as a way of moving the broadband forward in Riverton, you know, which helps the city. We still have a rural broadband issue, which is typically being delivered wirelessly today, and not necessarily real reliable either, in some cases. So, you know, quite a few things, better than 50% of the county population is rural, right? And so if we're really going to be a connected county, we need to look at other things beyond what we're just discussing here for the city of Riverton.
Tony?
Mayor and Council, one of the things, while we were at the WAM conference, is they did a pretty long session on fiber connectivity, broadband as a community, and there are other communities throughout the U.S. and even in Wyoming that have set up plans on how they're going to expand their broadband stages and how they're going to seek funding, and as funding becomes available. We're already beginning that research and trying to see what has everybody else done, how have they made it work, and can any of this work for us? So when we discuss a public-private partnership, this is a conversation that Kevin and I have had a couple times. I believe there is a role for the city, I mean, on some level, to say, here, this is what we can do and be part of the conversation in terms of priorities. So we're already doing a little bit of that work, and we hope to bring that to you at some point in the near future. We did discuss a fiber discussion in, I think, two months? I think it works two months from tonight. So we'd like to be able to, at least at that time, show you, here are some ideas that, or examples of what other communities have done, so that might give you some options and clarify that conversation just a little bit. That's all.
Thank you. Go ahead and finish up.
All right. So then we just went on to the goals, and we talked about that in your last meeting, was updating the city master plan, and of course, a strategic plan for economic development. Moving that forward, we feel is very critical, and some of these other discussions will occur at that point with the community, and how can we really help? And I hope to get other stakeholders to those meetings to really make an impact on the broadband, for example. Then the other, the last three there are just the building blocks that we had talked about, you know, expanding our existing businesses. How can we help them? How can we let them know what's out there from the Wyoming Business Resource Network standpoint, what's out there with CWC, with the Job Corps, et cetera? Both great facilities, doing an excellent job, and they're real assets to the community. We need to utilize them more and help out the businesses. And then the entrepreneurial programs, quite a few of those, and we did talk about the Brunton spinoffs, you know, that are benefiting our community and Lander at this point, and recruiting new businesses. So that's pretty much what we had on the goal side. Does anybody want to add anything? Of course.
In any organization, there is what's called the tone at the top. And that tone at the top sets the attitude of everybody in that organization, one way or the other. If the tone at the top is negative, negativity spreads. If the tone at the top is positive, positivity spreads. One of our goals is to have every citizen in Riverton meet every stranger as if that stranger were a rich uncle that was willing to leave them an endowment. Every stranger, you should treat like he's family. Every stranger, you should assist and help. And every time you see some, or listen to somebody discuss a business opportunity, instead of saying, ah, that'll never work here, that's just a really lousy waste of your time. Maybe it would be more helpful if you said, you know, we can do this. And I know just who you should go talk to. You can help take that nickel off the track. And let that one guy move the car. You can do that. So I think that should be the goal of us as a community, is to be able to say, yes, we can.
Thank you, Alan. Anybody else have any questions for Idea Inc. folks? Well, thank you for coming tonight. We look forward to working with you guys in the near future. I think we're striving to do some master planning, and we expect to be involved in that this summer.
Yes.
Okay, that's good, and I appreciate everything you do. I've been able to attend the Idea Inc. board meetings a few times, and I'm impressed that there's this group of folks in Riverton that is interested in how Riverton does, and spend enough time at it themselves to try to make us grow and be prosperous, and so I'm grateful for the effort that you put into it. Thank you. Okay? All right. So, Mr. White? No? No? Okay, so...
Kevin, who is this gentleman back here?
This happens, yeah, very important individual, happens to be with Sage West, the COO with Sage West, is Dan in the back, and so if you guys have any specific questions on the Sage West side...
I'm Dan Springer.
Dan Springer, okay, thank you. All right. So we had Mr. White on the agenda for tonight, but he has not come in, so I think that'll take care of our basic meeting this evening. The chair would entertain a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of personnel, considering the appointment and employment right to practice dismissal, complaints or charges against a public officer, professional person, or employee in accordance with Wyoming statute 16-4-405AII, and for the purpose of considering offers, tendering wages, salaries, benefits, or terms of employment during negotiations in accordance with Wyoming statute 16-4-405AX.
So moved. Second.
So I didn't, Sean, you moved?
Yes, we all approve it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We can go.
We're in executive session at seven...
I haven't gotten...
Forty-eight.